Hello, my name is Greg Marshall then and I'm the State Director for AARP Vermont. Thank you for joining us today for this important discussion about the coronavirus pandemic and the state and federal response. These are difficult times for all Vermonters and AARP wants to make sure that you have the information and resources you need to cope with this crisis as it evolves. We're joined today on this call by an extremely distinguished panel and we're deeply grateful today to be joined by Governor Phil Scott, Vermont Health Commissioner Dr. Mark Levine, Senator Patrick Leahy, Senator Bernie Sanders, and Congressman Peter Welch. These officials will share important information and updates on the pandemic from both the state and federal perspectives. And you'll learn what the state has done to protect Vermonters and how the healthcare system is responding and how this is affecting you and your family. We'll also get some really important information on the latest developments out of Washington, DC on the federal response. And we also want to hear your questions and concerns in the special forum with Vermont's leaders in the fight against this virus. This is an interactive call and after a few brief opening statements, we're going to go to the calls right away. So this is your chance to ask those questions and to do that, all you need to do is press star three on your telephone keypad. That's star three on your telephone keypad to get yourself in the queue to ask your question of the governor or two senators or congressman Welch today. So we're going to get this call going and we are going to start with Governor Scott. Governor Scott, welcome.
Yeah, thank you Greg for putting all this together. It's really important. I'd first like to thank our congressional delegation for all that you've done in Washington on our behalf. I can tell you that without your help and all that Congress has done thus far, we'd be in much worse shape than we are. So with that, I don't have to tell all of you how much has changed over the last couple of months. It was just six weeks ago, it seems like about six months ago, on March 13th that I declared a state of emergency. And since then, we've had a rapid pace of taking many, many steps to protect the health and safety of Vermonters like restricting access to long-term care facilities, hospitals. We shut down schools, we closed childcare centers, bars, restaurants, and so many businesses throughout Vermont. And then we asked something that was really difficult. We asked people to stay home, to stay safe. When we started, of course, this is a once in a maybe a lifetime situation that we have. There's no playbook to follow and so we've had to figure this out on the fly, which meant listening to the experts. Some of them were on the phone today, my team, which I'm blessed to have surrounding me, a very talented group. And we've had to make the difficult decisions based on whatever data, science that we could have and as well just instinct. Look, I understand, I know how difficult this has been, but Vermonters have sacrificed and literally saved hundreds of lives as a result. And because of what we've done, because of the strategy and people willing to do the right thing for the greater good, we've been able to slowly reopen the economy with a measured approach and a constant, constant eye on the data. And by the way, I should remind people that we probably have the strictest stay-home order in the country. So some of the things we're reopening, other states, even New York, never even closed. So we may have been a little bit too conservative in some respects, but I believe that that's equated into many lives saved. But it won't be a flip of the switch, turning this back on, which means we must continue to do all we can to help each other through this. We'll continue to work with the legislature and our congressional delegation to pull every lever we can to help Vermonters and our businesses sort through this financial reality that we're facing with this pandemic. I know many of you are on the phone, you're retired or near retirement and have many concerns and questions, so I look forward to getting to it and hearing from you and learning about what you're seeing. But before we do, I just want to make sure you know how committed all of us are to helping you in any way we can to make sure people age in the setting they choose with the right supports around them. And while I can't tell you how long you'll need to wear a mask or when you'll be able to go out for dinner, I can tell you, we'll continue to do everything we can to keep you safe. So again, thank you Greg and you've done a great, you've done a lot, a great deal over the years to help us, each and every one of us, understand the needs of your members. So I look forward to hearing your questions.
We appreciate it Governor Scott. Again, please press star three on your telephone keypad to get yourself in the queue to ask a question. We'd like to go now to Senator Leahy. Senator, the floor is yours.
Thank you Greg and Governor, thank you. Actually Marcel and I want to thank all of you at AARP for hosting this. We hear so much from our fellow Vermonters, we're all facing this problem. Governor Scott, I told you before, I appreciate your leadership trying to handle this pandemic and I appreciate Vermonters following your leadership. You made it very straightforward, said what you had and there we went. And Mark Levine, I had so many people tell me thank you for what you've said, but we tried to work together, Peter Welch, Bernie Sanders, myself, because we know we're in this together. We passed the COVID bills, that's fine. We passed the Families First Act, that's fine, and then the CARES Act, and we will pass more as we need it. And just today, we got announcement, Senator Sanders and I and others had asked CMS to allow access to audio-only telemedicine. Telemedicine became available through a change in Medicare, but a lot of Vermonters, including myself, and I wanted to, my home in Millisack, we don't have the broadband to support video conferencing. And a number of us, Republicans and Democrats, came together, said that we should have audio-only. Today, they've announced that Medicare would pay for audio-only services. It will increase the payment rates for this. Now, this will help Vermont physicians provide care to their patients. And that, I think is a great, great start. So I want to thank Bernie, I want to thank Peter, Governor Scott, Speaker Johnson, President Pro Tem Ash, our state legislative leaders. We've held together on this. We actually care. We, it's not a cliche to say we're Vermont strong and we'll come out stronger. We may come out different, but because we've held together, we will be stronger and every one of us are with every one of our fellow Vermonters all the way through. And Marcel and I have everybody in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you so much Senator Leahy. Senator Sanders, the floor is yours. Senator? Senator Sanders, are you there? We got you? Might be an audio problem. Congressman Welch, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
I am back on if you, I am sorry.
Oh, there you go Senator, go ahead please, thank you.
I apologize. I just wanted to thank you Greg and AARP for the great work they're doing in Vermont and around the country. And to just echo what the governor and Senator Leahy have said, everybody knows that we're living in an unprecedented moment in American history. We're living in a period where we have a pandemic and an economic meltdown, and that means that in our state and around the country, people have lost their jobs in record-breaking numbers. And right now, in Vermont, people are wondering about how they're going to feed their families, how they're going to pay their rent, how they're going to pay their mortgages, how they're going to pay their student debt. So we got a whole bunch of problems. And as the governor and Senator Leahy indicated, at the statewide level and at the federal level, we've got to roll up our sleeves and work together. I think the legislation passed in the Congress is an important step forward, but much, much more needs to be done. We have expanded unemployment, so that people who have never received unemployment before will now get checks and they get $600 a week more than they previously have gotten. We have passed legislation to help small businesses and the implementation of that is difficult. We have to work on making sure that very small businesses, businesses that don't have great connections with banks, that don't have all kinds of lawyers and accountants, get the help that they need. We are making sure that the $1,200 checks and $500 for the kids get out as quickly as it possibly can to all people who are eligible for those programs. So we have made some progress, but clearly we have a long way to go. I just got off the phone a little while ago with folks who are working with low-income people through the cap agencies here in the state. And we are seeing a lot of folks, we're struggling with food, we're seeing a lot of anxiety and depression because people are really worried, they're worried about the future. So all that I would say is that at this moment, we roll up our sleeves together, that we recognize the severity of this crisis, that we are not listening to those who say, let's open up the economy tomorrow and forget about the health consequences. That does not make a lot of sense to me. We've got to be protecting health, gradually opening up the economy, making sure that we have the tests that are available, et cetera, et cetera. So we're in the midst of something that we have never seen before. I think I share the pride that others do in the state of Vermont's response, but we got a lot of work in front of us and let's continue going forward together. So let me thank the governor and Senator Leahy and Congressman Welch and AARP and everybody else on the phone for the great work they're doing.
Thank you Senator Sanders. Congressman Welch?
Thank you very much and I thank the governor and my colleagues in Congress. It's tremendous to be in this as a team effort. It's the only way all of us as Vermonters are going to get through this. And we're past the shock stage and we're into the long slog to get us back to normal as quickly and as effectively as we can. You know, this is a once in a hundred year event. The last pandemic that we had was the Spanish Flu in 1918 and it took many, many more lives across the world than we lost in that horrible World War I. And already, just in the last couple of months, we've lost 60,000 beautiful Americans to this terrible disease. And now, the thing is, there's a way to proceed. It's hard, but it's knowable. First, our governor has the responsibility to look out with the health procedures that are absolutely essential to protecting our well-being. And the social distancing that's been implemented here is working, it's bending the curve. And we've got Dr. Levine who can speak about that. But the second is that the collateral consequence of that social distancing, of course, is you turn the lights off in the economy. And that's where the federal government has to be there as the financial backup. It is your government. Bernie, Patrick, and I work down there, but we work for you and the government is for you. And this is a time where we've got to go big and we have gone big with about $3 trillion in aid. And that's borrowed money and that was agreed to by Mitch McConnell and Nancy Pelosi just to give an indication of how widespread the realization is that we've got to take dramatic action. And as we proceed, we're going to have to make adjustments. Bernie and Patrick and I are trying to get changes in the payroll protection plan because we're seeing from Vermonters on the ground, there's things that have to be modified. We heard from lots of folks, providers, that look, we've got to do telehealth and we've got to even be able to do telephone calls to get care out. And we were successful, as Senator Leahy mentioned, so that our providers are going to get full reimbursement for that and make it possible for people in Vermont to get easier and safer access to healthcare. So we're in this for the long haul and we're in it together. And my heart goes out to every Vermonter who not only is worrying about their physical well-being, especially of somebody they love, but trying to figure out financially, how are we going to take care of the rent? And we have got to stay there and we will be on this to the best of our ability to help us get through this. Thank you.
Thanks so much Congressman Welch. Dr. Levine, a specific question for you. We've been, Vermonters have been hearing you and Governor Scott and others in the administration talk regularly. And there's been a lot of talk about the nursing homes and rehab's long-term care facilities in the state. Could you give us a sense of where we are with that? Are they still at great risk or have they been contained? And this is obviously a significant issue for AARP members.
Yes, I'd be delighted to and thank you again for having this call and I appreciate the esteemed company I'm in here on this call. From the outset, we knew one thing, if we knew anything, and that was that COVID did particularly target the vulnerable. And elderly and vulnerable oftentimes go hand in hand. So from our beginning phases, we really wanted to focus on who was most vulnerable to the disease, to having complications or poor outcomes, or even death from the disease. So we had a major focus on the whole entity, if you will, of long-term care facilities. And the very earliest mitigation moves we made had to do with significant restrictions on visitations to those facilities and evaluating the staff for illness, either by symptoms or by taking temperatures before they could even begin a shift. And we spent a lot of time educating the facilities about preemptive and preventive strategies, knowing that this is a very contagious disease. Our early work was very much fundamental epidemiology and public health and it still remains that way. Looking for cases, making sure that cases are isolated, trying to trace where the case may have gotten the disease from or given it to, and quarantining within facilities. There's a fancy term called cohorting and that essentially just means making sure infected people stay with infected people and uninfected people stay away from infected people. And it goes toward the staff as well. And all along, we've been integrating longstanding, but as well as immediate guidance from the Centers for Disease Control. And we quickly evolved to going beyond this kind of guidance to really doing facility-wide testing if there was any inkling of a case, either in a staff member or a resident of a long-term care facility. And that really allowed for a lot of important staffing decisions and cohorting decisions. We also very quickly developed a boots-on-the-ground approach with an outbreak response team that could very nimbly respond to any kind of outbreak in a facility and help try to mitigate it. And we've only gotten more aggressive since that time with policies regarding admissions to facilities and testing of those admissions to make sure they are not vectoring disease into the facility, quarantining new admissions, and actually things like universal masking of the staff and having the facilities make worst-case scenario plans so they'd always be prepared. So I've painted a very positive picture, but I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to acknowledge and have us all collectively remember those who did not do so well during the last six weeks, eight weeks, and those who may have actually died from the pandemic. And in Vermont, we're very happy we only have 49 deaths, but those are still very meaningful deaths. And almost half of those deaths did come from individuals who were in a nursing home We have very much tried to, if you will, remember them by doing better every time. I'm happy to say, and I always knock on wood, that there's only been a few facilities in the state that have had a severe outbreak. So this is really testimony not only to public health and to all of the rules in place, but more so to the facilities themselves, because it's a real heavy lift to not have infection enter your facility in the middle of a major pandemic. And we should recognize how well many facilities have done and essentially been ineffective. We've really, well, I want to, in my last second, just also say that besides the traditional assisted care facilities, nursing home facilities, et cetera, there are many places in Vermont where older individuals live in a very independent living situation. It may be a large apartment building or condominium building or what have you, but those buildings likewise could be susceptible to having infection enter them. And we've been very fortunate there as well, with only a few of those facilities affected and with a good containment strategy enacted there. But just like with the nursing homes, we have outbreak response teams going to them. And we also have teams called essential services response teams, because you can imagine if you're told that you have to isolate in your own apartment, well, you still need to eat and drink every day, you still need your medications delivered, et cetera. So the state has an entire
For those programs. So we have made some progress, but clearly we have a long way to go. I just got off the phone a little while ago with folks who are working with low-income people through the cap agencies here in the state. And we are seeing a lot of folks, we're struggling with food, we're seeing a lot of anxiety and depression, because people are really worried, they're worried about the future. So all that I would say is that at this moment, we roll up our sleeves together, that we recognize the severity of this crisis, that we are not listening to those who say, "Let's open up the economy tomorrow and forget about the health consequences." That does not make a lot of sense to me. We've got to be protecting health, gradually opening up the economy, making sure that we have the tests that are available, et cetera, et cetera. So we're in the midst of something that we have never seen before. I think I share the pride that others do in the state of Vermont's response. But we've got a lot of work in front of us, and let's continue going forward together. So let me thank the governor and Senator Leahy and Congressman Welch and AARP and everybody else on the phone for the great work they're doing.
Thank you, Senator Sanders. Congressman Welch?
Thank you very much, and I thank the governor and my colleagues in Congress. It's tremendous to be in this as a team effort. It's the only way all of us as Vermonters are going to get through this. And we're past the shock stage and we're into the long slog to get us back to normal as quickly and as effectively as we can. You know, this is a once-in-a-hundred-year event. The last pandemic that we had was the Spanish Flu in 1918, and it took many, many more lives across the world than we lost in that horrible World War I. And already, just in the last couple of months, we've lost 60,000 beautiful Americans to this terrible disease. And now, the thing is, there's a way to proceed. It's hard, but it's knowable. First, our governor has the responsibility to look out with the health procedures that are absolutely essential to protecting our well-being. And the social distancing that's been implemented here is working. It's bending the curve, and we've got Dr. Levine who can speak about that. But the second is that the collateral consequence of that social distancing, of course, is you turn the lights off in the economy. And that's where the federal government has to be there as the financial backstop. It is your government. Bernie, Patrick, and I work down there, but we work for you, and the government is for you. And this is a time where we've got to go big, and we have gone big with about $3 trillion in aid, and that's borrowed money. And that was agreed to by Mitch McConnell and Nancy Pelosi, just to give an indication of how widespread the realization is that we've got to take dramatic action. And as we proceed, we're going to have to make adjustments. Bernie and Patrick and I are trying to get changes in the payroll protection plan, because we're seeing from Vermonters on the ground, there's things that have to be modified. We heard from lots of folks, providers, that, "Look, we've got to do telehealth, and we've got to even be able to do telephone calls to get care out." And we were successful, as Senator Leahy mentioned, so that our providers are going to get full reimbursement for that and make it possible for people in Vermont to get easier and safer access to healthcare. So we're in this for the long haul, and we're in it together. And my heart goes out to every Vermonter who not only is worrying about their physical well-being, especially of somebody they love, but trying to figure out financially, how are we going to take care of the rent? And we have got to stay there, and we will be on this to the best of our ability to help us get through this. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Congressman Welch. Dr. Levine, a specific question for you. We've been, Vermonters have been hearing you and Governor Scott and others in the administration talk regularly, and there's been a lot of talk about the nursing homes and rehab's long-term care facilities in the state. Could you give us a sense of where we are with that? Are they still at great risk, or have they been contained? And this is obviously a significant issue for AARP members.
Yes, I'd be delighted to, and thank you again for having this call, and I appreciate the esteemed company I'm in here on this call. From the outset, we knew one thing, if we knew anything, and that was that COVID did particularly target the vulnerable. And elderly and vulnerable oftentimes go hand in hand. So from our beginning phases, we really wanted to focus on who was most vulnerable to the disease, to having complications or poor outcomes, or even death from the disease. So we had a major focus on the whole entity, if you will, of long-term care facilities. And the very earliest mitigation moves we made had to do with significant restrictions on visitations to those facilities and evaluating the staff for illness, either by symptoms or by taking temperatures before they could even begin a shift. And we spent a lot of time educating the facilities about preemptive and preventive strategies, knowing that this is a very contagious disease. Our early work was very much fundamental epidemiology and public health, and it still remains that way. Looking for cases, making sure that cases are isolated, trying to trace where the case may have gotten the disease from or given it to, and quarantining within facilities. There's a fancy term called cohorting, and that essentially just means making sure infected people stay with infected people and uninfected people stay away from infected people. And it goes toward the staff as well. And all along, we've been integrating longstanding, but as well as immediate guidance from the Centers for Disease Control. And we quickly evolved to going beyond this kind of guidance to really doing facility-wide testing if there was any inkling of a case, either in a staff member or a resident of a long-term care facility. And that really allowed for a lot of important staffing decisions and cohorting decisions. We also very quickly developed a boots-on-the-ground approach with an outbreak response team that could very nimbly respond to any kind of outbreak in a facility and help try to mitigate it. And we've only gotten more aggressive since that time with policies regarding admissions to facilities and testing of those admissions to make sure they are not vectoring disease into the facility, quarantining new admissions, and actually things like universal masking of the staff and having the facilities make worst-case scenario plans so they'd always be prepared. So I've painted a very positive picture, but I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to acknowledge and have us all collectively remember those who did not do so well during the last six weeks, eight weeks, and those who may have actually died from the pandemic. And in Vermont, we're very happy we only have 49 deaths, but those are still very meaningful deaths. And almost half of those deaths did come from individuals who were in a nursing home facility. We have very much tried to, if you will, remember them by doing better every time. I'm happy to say, and I always knock on wood, that there's only been a few facilities in the state that have had a severe outbreak. So this is really testimony not only to public health and to all of the rules in place, but more so to the facilities themselves, because it's a real heavy lift to not have infection enter your facility in the middle of a major pandemic. And we should recognize how well many facilities have done and essentially been unaffected. We've really, well, I want to, in my last second, just also say that besides the traditional assisted care facilities, nursing home facilities, et cetera, there are many places in Vermont where older individuals live in a very independent living situation. It may be a large apartment building, or condominium building, or what have you, but those buildings likewise could be susceptible to having infection enter them. And we've been very fortunate there as well, with only a few of those facilities affected and with a good containment strategy enacted there. But just like with the nursing homes, we have outbreak response teams going to them, and we also have teams called essential services response teams. Because you can imagine, if you're told that you have to isolate in your own apartment, well, you still need to eat and drink every day, you still need your medications delivered, et cetera. So the state has an entire apparatus in place through the Emergency Operations Center to make sure those needs are taken care of. Thanks for letting me speak.
We appreciate your time and everything you're doing, Dr. Levine. We're going to go live to the phones now, and our first question is from Suzanne in Charlotte. Suzanne, what's your question tonight, please?
Well, first of all, I appreciate that everyone is, you know, really trying their best. But I do find it difficult, not only for myself, but for friends and family that I know. You know, we dedicated our lives to being in Vermont, and I have, I initially applied for the unemployment, because it was, we were told, you know, "If you can't work because of the shutdown, go ahead and apply for unemployment, even though you're self-employed." And I'm technically considered an independent contractor. And then they had, I did that whole application online, followed up, followed up. That was denied. Then all of a sudden, I started getting texts on my phone saying, "Oh, we approved you. You know, now you have to, you know, every week, sign in," and yada, yada. So to shorten this up as much as humanly possible, I then did a PUA application, because after six weeks, I was told, "Oh, well, now you're eligible for PUA." So I did that. I have talked to my lawyer.
Looks like we lost her. I'm not sure where she got cut off, but Governor Scott, someone would want to handle? I think we know where that question was ultimately going. Hello?
I got you now. Yeah, sorry about that, Greg. I muted myself. You know, this is an unfortunate situation we find ourselves in, again, unprecedented in terms of the number of people applying for unemployment. No excuses, you know, I've taken responsibility for this. And we've done a lot since those early days of being overwhelmed. We still have a long ways to go, but this PUA, which is the pandemic unemployment assistance program that Congress put into place, was to take care of those with, that worked independently or were, you know, self-employed. And it's, we've never done that before. The unemployment system is traditionally for those who paid into the system, and they've never been covered. So this is a brand-new system. There was no program, there was no, you know, there wasn't any guidance really until about three weeks ago. So we had to put this program together, which we've done with our Agency of Digital Services, and we just went live with it this week. We've had people sign up. We put, I think on Tuesday, we actually put out about $26 million in that program alone. We have, we're clearing them just as quick as we can. But all I can say is, help is on the way. We've reduced the number of people calling in, because we've been able to get more, more money out the door, like $100 million or more. And so we're getting there, but I know it's not quick enough. In fact, it wasn't quick enough at one point, about 10 days ago, that I decided, we tried to do some workarounds and so forth, we got the number down to about 8,500, 300 people. And I decided to ask the treasurer to work with me to send out checks for $1,200 to those who are remaining. So we did that. They came in on a Saturday, cut the checks, and on Sunday. And then I delivered them to the post office on Monday myself, and they were in the hands of Vermonters by Wednesday. So again, we've got some more work to do, but we're in a better position than we were two weeks ago, and I hope the caller, if, I would just say, give us a call, and we can follow up, 828-3333. Give us a call on our governor's line, and we'll see what we can do to follow up and see if there's another problem that we're not foreseeing, why the person that just called in can't, has not received a check, because she should have received something by this point.
Thank you, Governor Scott. Let's go to Warren in Eastover. Warren, what's your question this evening?
Hi. My question is for Senator Leahy and Sanders and Welch, Congressman Welch. I would like to know why our stimulus checks in Vermont are running two weeks behind other states.
Senator Leahy, Senator Sanders, you want to respond?
Well, I'd be glad to weigh in on that. We were on, we just had a caucus call on that. There's about 100 million of the checks have gone out. And what I understand is the ones that went out the first are ones where your taxpayer ID, your social security number is on file, and it goes directly deposited. There are delays here and there, but we are going to be following up to make certain that the Department of Treasury gets those checks out as they promised on schedule. The ones that are the latest to go are ones where people have not had to file taxes, and they can go to the IRS website to fill in information about a bank deposit. And if you'd like to call my office, and I'm sure Bernie or Patrick's office, we'd be glad to see if we can help specifically.
And I agree with that. Yeah, and our-
Go ahead, Senator.
No, I was just going to say, our staff and the appropriations committee, and I know Bernie's staff, mine, Peters, have been pushing, saying, "Get those checks out." Again, we're dealing with some unprecedented situation, but I'm hearing similar complaints, and at the same time, I get calls from a lot of people saying, "Hey, we got the check." But I think what Peter says is absolutely right. I think his analysis is correct.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Sanders, anything to add to that?
Well, I just would simply say, I don't know that Vermont is behind other states in general. There are some states, for example, where people who are unemployed are waiting forever to get their checks. But we have had, the delegation has had deep concerns about the implementation process in general and making sure that in this crisis, when so many people are hurting and so many people don't have any money, get that money out as quickly as possible. That's the intent of that legislation, and we will do everything we can to make that happen.
Thank you. Let's go to Janet up in Newport. Janet, your question this evening?
What are you doing to assist local cities and towns to allow them to offer relief to individuals and small businesses in paying their real estate taxes?
Go ahead.
Or Congressman Welch, anybody can take this.
Well, on the federal, on the federal side, we are not dealing directly with the property taxes. What we're doing is what I think Senator Leahy and Sanders mentioned. We're doing the $1,200, we're doing the unemployment, the payroll protection plan, the aid to the states and the hospitals, and more is going to have to come. One of the biggest challenges for us federally is to get aid back to Vermont and the other states, whereas the governor will tell you that our budget has collapsed, and there is enormous pressure on individuals to pay current taxes, but it'll be even brutal in the future if we don't get substantial aid back to the states with a good deal of flexibility. But I'll leave it to the governor to answer specifically about individual property taxes.
Yeah, Peter, thank you very much. And Janet, I understand the pain you're suffering with right now. It's almost like a ripple effect across all agencies, departments, and funds and so forth. So a lot of the property taxes will go back to the municipalities to pay their bills, but also to put in the education fund. So we're going to have, you know, maybe a $100 million hole in the education fund that in some way, somehow, we've got to fulfill. So if people aren't paying the property taxes, there's that hole in that budget, as well in the general fund and the transportation fund. We're seeing the same type of thing. All told, I would guess we're going to see maybe a $400 to $500 million hole in the budget this year, which is significant. And we're going to, we're all in this somewhat together. It's going to, we're going to have to do all we can. We were fortunate to receive some money from the cares act through the great work of our congressional delegation, but there's not a lot of flexibility in that. There's, we can't use it to fulfill, fill holes in the budget or give to municipalities and so forth. It's very well-defined, the guidance is defined, and doesn't give us as much flexibility as we might need, and that's not the fault of the congressional delegation. This is, the administration is the one who put the guidance on this. So all I can say is, we have to totally figure out the magnitude of the problem. Again, what you're seeing on the local level, as well as what you're seeing individually, and we're just going to have to do the best we can to put this all together. But there's no easy answers to this, and we're going to be faced with some crying times in the next few months, next year, as we face this recession, depression.
If I could just jump in, Greg.
Go ahead, please.
Let me just say this. Okay, just say this. Janet, you may have noticed in the news, there's a big debate in Washington now. We have some leaders who think we should allow states who are suffering terrible financial situations to go bankrupt. I think our delegation thinks that's an absurd idea. And in fact, what we are working on right now in the new package to come out of Washington will be significant help for states and cities all over this country. And what we will stress is that when we're talking about help for municipalities, they will be small towns as well. Rural America, whether it's Vermont or the rest of this country, is hurting. And if we can get adequate resources into the states and into the communities, it will to some degree take the burden off the property tax and give a little bit of relief to hard-pressed taxpayers.
Thank you, Senator.
If I might, if I might add that, the, all of us who worked on that, and a lot of us worked very hard to build, it was supposed to have a lot more flexibility than it does. We feel that the administration, not the state administration, but the federal administration, did not give the flexibility that they originally agreed they would. We're now working on a fourth package, and we're trying to get both Republicans and Democrats to join together and say, "You've got to have more flexibility." Every state is different. Vermont is different than Minnesota is different than Arkansas, you know, and then our municipalities are different. I have no problem with giving a large amount of money to Vermont, and though it's going to be spent well, because we do have good state and local government, but we've got to have the flexibility, and we've got to stop the idea in the administration of Washington that one size fits all.
Thank you, Senator. We're going to go to David in Rutland. David, what's your question this afternoon?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm, I was actually infected by the COVID virus and one of the people that have. And I was contacted once by the state in the beginning, and six weeks later, once by the state in the end, with vague questions, basically. My question is more about the contact tracing. What's, I understand you have a software program and other things, and you've done stuff well with the actual long-term care facilities, but what's going to be done for the public to ensure this contact pop-ups and whatnot, that we get people notified and isolated?
Hi. Yes, I can certainly handle that. Thank you for that question, and it sounds like you've recovered, so that's wonderful. The contact tracing plan that we unveiled earlier this week and that we are adhering to involves, first of all, you have the person who tests positive and is the case. That person is not only asked about what happened and who they were in contact with in the 48 hours before they became ill, because that's called the pre-symptomatic period, where you may not know you are capable of infecting someone else, but you actually could be, you haven't developed symptoms yet. But we've now decided to go 14 days back, so we can try to actually get at perhaps the source of where your infection came from in the first place. But going forward, we basically do contact tracing at the time we connect with that first case. And it's a very exhaustive and comprehensive interview process that really tries to find all of the individuals that you may have been in contact with over that period of time, so that everyone's total risk in the society can go down over that period of time as well. The software component is a very nice added feature that allows the health department to feed information outward to those who have either become cases or who are being followed or quarantined. But it's also, in reverse, a way for those individuals to report any symptoms, to report on how they're doing, to ask any questions, to obtain more information. So it's a two-way feedback kind of process, and it really allows everyone to be much better interconnected and for the process of trying to, as the governor responded, saying, put out these brush fires that occur, where there may be a case here or a case there, try to have such a comprehensive assessment at the time that no stone will be left unturned, and we'll be able to make sure that everyone can stay as safe as possible going forward. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you so much, Dr. Levine. We're going to go next to Tammy in Milton. Tammy, what's your question?
Two things. First is a statement in regards to, I just want to say thank you to you in this forum, but also to all the healthcare workers and frontline workers out there that are working their hardest to help us all through this in the state of Vermont and throughout the U.S. Second, my question is, is that with the potential of there being another, God forbid, COVID rise in the fall, I was wondering about having more access to or getting underway a task force for broadband, so that people that need to stay at home, such as either for work, students or educators, in case we can't physically start the school year on time, as well as just for socially being connected to the internet?
That's a great question. I'll open that up to any of the congressional delegation or Governor Scott who'd like to talk about that.
Well, let me just jump in and say, Tammy, you are 100% right. It is literally beyond belief that in the year 2020, there are parts of Vermont, parts of America, significant parts, where people cannot even access decent quality broadband. And I know I speak for the delegation, but we have brought some money into the state over the recent years. Situation has improved somewhat, but especially in this crisis, when kids can't do their homework, when working people can't access state government or the federal government to get the benefits they're entitled to, we see how weak the situation is. So this is an issue that has got to be dealt with, and we will do everything we can to make sure that every community in America has high-quality and affordable broadband services.
I think the, I agree with that, and I think the services should be like, be able to be taken as much for granted as the fact you have electricity in your towns. Now, we have gotten good news with the telehealth today, finally allowing that by phone and have Medicare reimbursements and so on, what I discussed earlier in our get-together. But that's just, that's just the first step. You know, I live in the town of Middlesex, right between Montpelier and Waterbury. Montpelier and Waterbury have fairly good high-speed internet. I have sporadic internet at best where I live. That I hear the same from people all over the state and in all the other 49 states. This, in this century, it has to be available to everybody.
Thank you, Senator Leahy. Governor Scott, anything to add on that?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I do think that this highlights- First of all, I do think that this highlights the need that we have in the state and throughout the nation for another REA-type of event where the Rural Electification Act, and this is the same type of thing with broadband. So, I think, you know, Congress will, will take this up at some point in time. In the meantime, we've, we've learned a lot about our state as well. We've been able to implement, put into, to service many hotspots with the, with the help of Microsoft and other entities who have come to the aid of Vermonters to try and provide some of that relief. We're considering some other approaches as well, maybe even some temporary type of, of facilities to, to bring that capacity, because as you said, Tammy, they're, you know, they're, they're talking about the possibility of this happening again, a second wave. We'll be much better prepared at that point in all different kinds of ways from a health aspect, but also we want to be prepared from a connectivity standpoint as well. So, I thank you for the question. It isn't lost on us how important this is to, to everyone in this day and age.
Thank you, Governor Scott. We're going to go to Carl with St. Johnsbury. Carl, what's your question this evening?
Yes, hi. This would probably be for Senator Leahy, or actually, anybody can answer this. This is, you know, this is costing us a lot of money and, and we all really appreciate the help so much. And, but I'm just worried that it's not an endless supply. And I'm wondering, you know, we had a big tax cut a year and a half ago or so, and I understand in this, this last stimulus, anybody that made over $500,000, half a million, got a special tax break again. You know, I think it was in real estate, which we know the President and Kirchner are both real estate people. I'm just wondering how we're going to pay this back if it's in a fair way. And I'm sure that every one of us working Vermonters will pay our fair share gladly to repay this money, but there has to be a, an evening. The, the wealthy have to pay more of their fair share. If you figure it out in percentages, the poorer man pays bigger percentage of his wealth than the wealthy. And that's just my question and thank you.
Well, I, I agree and that's why I voted against that. Huge tax cut is simply added to the deficit, did nothing for the average, for the average person in our state of Vermont. We, well, you stated it as well as anybody possibly could. I am very upset with Senator McConnell and others who want to put special tax breaks and other things into any future bills. They shouldn't be. That's how the average person, they have enough trouble paying their taxes. You're a multimillionaire, a few thousand one way or the other makes no difference. Thousand or 2,000 one way or the other makes a huge difference for an average person. I think there can be no greater use of taxpayers' money than to support the very, taxpayers who are deeply impacted by the public health crisis. We, it shouldn't be, we're all in this together if you're at a moderate or lower income, but if you're above that, you've got some specialized area. No, that's not the way the country should be.
Thank you. Senator Sanders, anything to add to that?
Well, I think Carl makes a, a, a very important point. And that is that in the midst of massive income and wealth inequality, you have many very profitable large corporations, Amazon comes to mind, who pay virtually nothing in federal income taxes. And meanwhile, working people are often being asked to pay more than they can afford. So, I think what Carl is saying, and I would agree, is that we need a tax system that is fair, that asks those people who are very, very wealthy, those large corporations that are making huge profits, to stop paying their fair share.
Congressman Welsh?
Well, I agree with Bernie Patrick in the caller. He did state it very well. I mean, all three of us voted against that tax cut that was used largely to do stock buybacks and enrich executives and wealthy shareholders. But on this question of what we're going to do now, where we've got a, we've got this absolute economic freefall, I'm totally of the view that we've got to do more rather than little. We cannot err on the side of doing too little. If we err at all, it has to be too much. Otherwise, the economy will never recover. Otherwise, people who are struggling to pay their rent or have some hopes of reopening their small business won't be able to do it. So, I'm all in on doing whatever we can, as long as what it is we're doing is helping everyday people who are really getting hit the hardest economically with this, with this disaster. Thank you.
We're going to go to Neil in Javendish. Neil, your question, please?
Yes, I, if I understand the use of these homemade cloth face masks, it's basically not to protect myself, but I would wear a mask to protect other people. So, I wonder why it's voluntary to wear a mask. Why isn't it mandatory? Because if I have to go food shopping, why should I be exposed to people not wearing masks who really don't particularly care whether they're ruining my health or not?
Governor Scott, Dr. Levine, you're the one?
Yeah, let me, let me start off by saying I, I understand, you know, we're learning more and more as this pandemic continues and we found that you're right. You're actually being altruistic if you're wearing a mask because you're protecting others. And what we're finding as well, and Dr. Levine can talk about this a little bit more, but those who are asymptomatic don't even know they have it, but could be carrying on the virus and transmitting it unknowingly. So, that's why it's so important for us to do all we can. Having said that, we can, we can make it mandatory, but that doesn't make it so. And then what happens then? Do we have citations? Do we have more polarization and so forth? What we're doing, what we're seeing is more education, more guidance, is providing more clarity, and we're seeing more masks naturally as we move through this. About three weeks ago, you didn't see that many people wearing facial coverings, but today it's becoming just more part of the culture, more accepted, and I think we'll see more as well. I, I think it's up to, we've just made it mandatory for anyone going back to work to wear facial coverings, whether it's in construction or manufacturing or whether it's in the, those, in the grocery stores or retail, anything that's open right now, we're requiring employees to wear facial coverings. I was, I was grateful to see Costco today. They announced that nationwide, they're making it mandatory. I think we're going to see others as well. I think we're going to see the Shaws, the Hannafords and so forth. I think they will do the right thing and make it mandatory as they do with, you can't go barefoot into some stores, you can't, you know, for those, can't go shirtless and so forth. So, they've, they, they have the ability to put this constraint on their customers. So, we're hopeful they do. We'll continue to watch this and if it becomes more of an issue, we can certainly get down that path. But my preference is for people to do the right thing and to, to provide that guidance and, and, and give that reasoning as to why it is so important to do this. Because the more people protect ourselves and protect others, the sooner we can get back to some sort of normalcy, whatever that new normalcy is. But it's going to take all of us doing the right thing because it's literally in our hands, you know? Washing your hands means a great deal and trying to disinfect anything. Wearing a facial covering makes such a difference, social, or maybe we, we should stop using social distancing, but Dr. Levine told us that the other day. We should talk about just physically being separated, just stay six feet apart. All those things make a difference. Don't, don't congregate in a, in a mass. Those things help. And the sooner we can adhere to that, the sooner we can get out of this and get back to some sort of normal life. Dr. Levine, do you want to weigh in?
You've done a great job, Governor, and to allow other questions, I'll just speak for 10 seconds. The bottom line is we're trying to create a new cultural norm here and cultural norms, you know, people in society buy into and then through their actions influence other members of society. And it's sort of like a carrot or a stick. I think it's hard to enforce yourself into this kind of situation, but to create a new norm is important. The Costco news was wonderful. I got an email from Hannafords that basically said the same thing. And these employers do have rights to be able to want to protect their own employees and their other customers, just like they tell us when we can't walk in the store with no shirt and a bathing suit on. So, I think this is how we're going to see these behaviors change and my own informal surveys are showing that they are.
Thank you. Thanks. We have time for one more question this evening. We're going to go to Alan in Essex Junction. Alan, what's your question tonight?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, please. Alan, you there?
Hello, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead and ask your question.
My question is, for those of us who haven't lost our income, can you provide either on the government, the state website or something, places where we can donate some of this stimulus money to help the Vermont economy? Because there's so many fewer places that we can spend money now that, and yet we want to put it back into the economy.
Governor, do you have a, is there a way to do this? Are they sending people to certain places that want to do that?
Well, certainly the first one that comes to mind. There are many entities that are worthy and trying to do all they can to help. But I would have to say, at this point during this crisis, the Vermont Food Bank would be the one that I would recommend. Thatvermontfoodbank.org. We have tremendous need. There are many who are vulnerable, need food on the table, so to speak, and they're providing a valuable service. I know the congressional delegation fought for some help or relief for the Vermont Food Bank, but it's just, it's not enough, as we've seen. So, if you have some extra money and you want to, to help others, that would be one way. The other thing that you could do, I know this sounds strange, but pay your taxes and that will help your local municipal governments and so forth. If you have the ability to pay, please do, because there's going to be a shortage in that respect as well. So, and if you're getting takeout as well and you're, and you're, you're getting it delivered or whatever, tip well. Those folks, I, I'm really worried about our, our restaurants and those, and employees and so forth that are suffering through this. So, do all you can to help them. But I thank you for the question and thank you for, for stepping up. It says a lot about Vermonters.
Unfortunately, everybody, we have run out of time. We could have taken many more questions this evening, but we are out of time. I want to just extend a huge thank you on behalf of AARP. It's more than 130,000 members across the state. We live in an extraordinary place where we can get our governor and our two senators and our member of Congress and others from the administration all on the phone at the same time to talk to you. It shows their incredible dedication, not just to our state, but to people in midlife and people in retirement in Vermont. And I am deeply grateful for each of you to join us, or for each of you joining us tonight. I want to make sure that people know that in AARP, we're keeping our website and our information up to date on a daily basis at AARP.org/coronavirus. We are working here in the state, not just with our congressional delegation, with Governor Scott and his administration, but trying to communicate directly with our members, trying to provide them good information so that they can make good decisions. But I have to say that we are extremely fortunate to be in a state where we're seeing great leadership all the way across the board. We strongly encourage everybody to listen to Governor Scott's daily briefings and to, and to follow all the rules and suggestions that are being made to keep all of us safe. And finally, I just want to say thank you and good night to everybody. Stay safe, wash up, and we'll reach back out to you soon. Thanks so much and have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.